On our meeting order then, the county's special reading for January twenty one. And I think we still should start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We didn't call things, or I guess we're just opening it up to if you have something you want to bring up.
Well, there have been multiple members that had questions about specific line items that came budget. Look, when you sneak call.
What do you call?
The edit budget is an all or none.
You want?
The edit budget is an all or none. Like, it could be either incorporated into the annual reports, defined as in fact, given the specific questions that several members had about that. Whether we discussed it as per before, if we voted on it up or down, and go back, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
The number, most number around here, so.
Well, it's.
Any other questions?
I mean, you can give us your concerns.
That's why we had Paul come in here tonight, because I thought my line item was that money. So, Darrell, chairman here, maybe we can have Paul discuss what he uses that for, so he can go on.
That's an excellent idea. Paul, if you would, just, we have, how much was it that we put into the highway budget, or requested for the highway budget?
Two fifty, I know.
It's probably two forty.
They've been at least I've been saying.
It's two forty.
Two forty this year, sir.
Oh, that's right. I forgot I cut it ten. Because we had to stay with more than.
I've been working a little bit on the. Thank you. Supposed chip and seal roads, and so, but I don't have everything done. So what I did, I took it and did all the projection in terms of what we might want to do for this year in terms of road improvement program. There's a couple few factors in here. Number one, over in our hand side, defining like the number seventy two. And that comes about because the normal life of a chip and seal is eight years. And if you take it and go back and divide up our mileage that we have for chip and seal roads, there's around seven hundred and seventy total, two hundred gravel. So they give up on five seventy, five by eight, and you're right around seventy two miles per road. So, that's what the plan has been, and that's how we've got with it right now. Try to do a minimum of seventy two miles a year. And that puts our roads right now, that we're, I'd say, not great grade, but we're in good shape. Got them up to a good level where they need to be. Now, thing is, if you don't take it and continue to do seventy two, seventy two miles a year, it starts improving. You're going backwards in terms of regressing. It's just like kind of buying a car, you take it off a lot, and your car, and so it's not worth as much. And that same with the roads. If you don't keep up with it on a regular basis, you're not going to have the roads. So that's the key factor that I'm looking at. And then also working within the money that was given to me in terms of the highway budget. Now, we were, we were, I was asked to cut our budget by seven hundred thousand dollars. Now, and that was based on us adding a certain amount of revenue. Whatever our revenues were for nineteen, was supposedly what we get for twenty. Well, when I checked them over, through about three hundred thousand dollars short, what we took in last year in terms of where we're at. So I said I cut it seven hundred, if you're cut, you know, a little less than that.
Yeah, I agree. I looked at those numbers the best today. They're, we'll get that straightened out.
And so, anyway, that, that factor comes in there where it says M B H additional. That brings us up to the level, in my opinion, where you're trying to not to spend any more what I took in as far as roads. I don't agree with that philosophy, but we'll go along with that philosophy for right now today. It's all right.
Well, I just want to clarify, we didn't say don't spend more than you bring a specific budget more than you spend.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that. What, what was the correction, or what, I, I, sorry.
What the, the, the council voted on or during budget hearings was that we would, no department in the county government budgets more than their revenue. And so, the, the, the problem, or the error that we made with Paul's budget is, we went off of our consultant's revenue forecast, which was lower than appears that that revenue is actually going to come in at. So we did, we had to reduce that, but the, the budget was more than the revenue coming in. So that's why we brought that number down. We said there, uh, there's a significant cash balance to North Beaufort Highway. So we said if there are, if you need to spend more than you're bringing in in a given year, there's money there to do it, but we just want to make sure that we're not budgeting systemically more than we're bringing in.
Yeah, we thought that, the money we have, I call it my savings account, highway savings account. It's around three million dollars. So it's not like we're poor, but I'm not one to, we'll just spend to be in terms of where we're at. So what I did, I took it and went down all the work. I'm not necessarily bored with everything. I tried to make an engineer's estimate in terms of what roads we need to do and where we're at. There's some prep work that needs to go with our paving, if you dig community crossings. And that adds to a place level, particularly on the ring blind road, there's need to do wedging levels up. And Carrollton has the same thing. If we don't do some wedging levels, we're not going to come out with a good profile on the road itself. On the paving, there are some other things you do there too. There are stone shoulders, there are some spots that fit on a ring blind road. If the depth of the home's red, it's probably going to be close to five or six inches. And we don't want to see that drop off there, for somebody coming on and off the road, drop off the road causing that. And then there's, I put a little contingency in there. Because I can tell you right now, these roads, even if we're looking at them, they're very indeterminate. They're not very orderly, regular, and they're very irregular in terms of the profile, the cross section. So I took a little money in there for that. Crack seal, that's something that we've been doing a while. I think it goes with paving dividends in terms of doing that. Micro seal, we've used that in, I thought subdivision road, we used it right around North Bend to Delphi last year. I think it just makes for a better product for more of a city use, as opposed to putting a lot of chip and seal. And then chip and seal, trying to make the numbers work and stay within the budget here. I think there are a number of roads, and I've got about five miles, that we could probably do a single layer on and have it be effective, and double layer, about thirty five point three miles. So, what it boils down to, just take them to a good engineer's estimate. And I say good, because I've been trying with this, trying to figure it out. This was something I pulled off my hat. I tried to take it, look at what we did last year, and match it up with some of our actual costs. We're talking right at one point two million dollars. To get that, I took the building loan less than four months, the funding. And so, M B H, right now, with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's been approved. Now, the M B H additional is the three hundred thousand dollars that I talked about. There's a difference between what we actually took in last year and what you probably, what you focus on with the better take in. And I couldn't have guessed any better than what you posted. I'm not trying to say we dragged along. And then the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we kept, which is a commission that we call bring us right up to one point three million dollars in terms of where we're at. So my case and point is, I'm trying to say, we really need to have a few hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there to make it work. And that's, that's what I tried to show with the numbers there.
So was that not the case in twenty nineteen?
No, we needed that money very then too, I believe.
Didn't you buy a dump truck with that money in twenty nineteen?
We did. We did. I mean, I, I, yes, we did. But that helped us in our M B H budget too, trying to make the fifty percent.
But the fifty percent comes out of the unrestricted side?
That's correct.
Right. So, you could have spent that out of eleven seventy six.
But I didn't have them. And I was trying to take all the money from that eleven seventy six, and get it on M B H.
Eleven seventy two, or three.
Yeah, eleven seventy two, trying, trying to make that come up to make our fifty percent.
Right, but, I mean, that, that, whether you bought that out of edit or out of eleven seventy three, I mean, so you have to spend fifty, well, fifty percent of the money goes into eleven seventy three, regardless. It has to, statutory.
Well, fifty percent of, there's additional, a little additional revenue, so there's a little bit of a difference. M B H is always going to have just a little more, because some of the hard money to take in there.
Right.
But, roughly every month, that gets a check, fifty percent goes to restricted, fifty percent goes to regular use.
Right. So that eleven seventy three account has to be spent on statutory things. What, what's the term of art they use?
Improve construction, reconstruction, and.
Right.
It's not maintenance.
Preservation, I think.
No, it's not preservation. That's the one that's, oh wait, no, I think you're right. I think you're right.
I think preservation.
But it's not potholes.
Potholes don't count. It doesn't matter how many potholes you have.
Right. Yeah, that's, but anyway, so regardless of whether this money, edit money is there, that money is still going to go into eleven seventy three, and it still has designated uses that it can only be useful. And then the eleven seventy six money has more uses that it can be useful. But there's nothing that says if I only spend a million dollars over here, that I can only spend a million dollars over here. It's just saying that you have to put it in that account, and it can only be used for certain tasks. Correct?
Actually not put in that account, it stays in.
Well, okay, but I mean, at the end of the year, whatever. But it has, half the, half the money that we receive has to.
Can you do that? I did not check that. I don't know. Did you spend all your edit money last year, the two thousand?
I don't, I don't think I did. I think there was a little bit left over.
So, I guess, my, my broader point is that this, you could have spent for the dump truck out of the M B H fund, and it wouldn't have affected anything with the eleven seventy three.
I didn't have money to add in my, I, I was covered.
But, but you could have come to the council, and the council could have approved it.
Nobody ever told me that. I mean, that, I mean, that's, now I'm not disagreeing with the officer, but my slide showed the officer told me again, work within, during the budget that I had given.
No, I'm sure.
And, you know, if there's a chance that I could come and get this, and I ask you that question during the budget. I don't mind doing that, but I'd like to try to save a little bit within what you like giving, and it's always good, I guess.
Well, and I think he asked us too, on that dump truck, he says, if I can find one, can you, can we get it in? So I'm waiting a month, and the price, you're not able to get it. I think he came to us, and we told him, and I, we, I think we told him, I said, find the money, go do it.
That, that was the process, that we didn't have to wait on the council to get the transfer done, so.
Right.
Because a lot of times.
Because we was down, uh, two trucks, if I remember right, at the time, and he was needing one.
Yeah. I don't know what it's going to have, that we can't replace.
Does that one caught on fire, wasn't it?
Yeah. Didn't edit it.
Yeah.
No, he wouldn't be able to know what his balance is.
Oh, I think you were saying what the balance in the edit, oh, you're seeing how much he didn't use? No, I, that would.
Then the M B Hs, is that where we get from them? Real facts?
That's the state.
Real facts are different separate accounts.
Okay.
And what I've been doing with that one, is setting it aside, using a core maintenance side, like potholes, cold mix, things like that, that don't count against, you know, the, the.
Right, now I think that's smart.
Is there any grants or anything else that's going to come through? I mean, I'm not going to come through, but are you thinking of any grants or things?
No, the only thing that, that right now is on the agenda is the community crossings grant. That's, I have submitted the application. I haven't heard yet what is going to prove as far as having all the lines filled in properly and sort of the area. We know that we've submitted it, but we haven't put that particularly in a long week. If you have something wrong, we'll let you know, correct? If, that's why I tried, and then earlier this time.
Is that a big, big money one?
Well, it's, it's a three to one. If that's where the three hundred to two thousand is there, that's our imagined target. And then I will turn on, if it's successful, and give us a million dollars.
Well, I guess I'm kind of confused, Josh, why you know, I haven't had a few before, you're two fifty.
Well, I'm, I'll make it really clear. So, the, the highway department has about five funds. Cume Bridge, uh, Cume Bridge, they have a, a C D in there as well. It's at five hundred or seven fifty.
Five hundred.
Five hundred. Local Road and Street, M B H, M B H restricted, and then meal tax. Those are all revenue sources for the highway department. So, uh, and, uh, today, as we're sitting here, the balance on those is about just shy of six million dollars in those, those accounts in total. And specifically in the M B H fund, which could be used to buy dump trucks and things like that, or three million fifty eight thousand dollars. In my opinion, the edit taxes collected to, and granted, I mean, when, when you guys started using this, we, we're getting about a million dollars more a year for, uh, because of the, the new tax structure than we used to. And this might have been necessary at one time.
I don't think that.
No, it's from the, from the states that do fuel taxes.
Somebody used to.
So we get a lot more money than we used to get on the M B H side. So, um, I don't see, you know, if, if we had to, we had to. But we, we got to look at the taxpayer and say, we're letting this tax as an edit tax to do economic development for the county. Now, was it economic development when we had four road conditions and we needed those tax dollars to go into the roads to maintain some things, and that probably was. But the fact of the matter is, that two fifty can come out of three million dollars that we have on the books today. And we can use that money in other ways that can grow the tide, you know, impact county from economic development.
I understand what you're saying there, but on my part of you, I perhaps have to keep that, because I don't know if you remember the floods we had about ten years ago, or washed out all the culverts. And a lot of that was fixed, and the money that he had put back for what I think he called his rainy day, for emergencies, and we didn't have to go, I was on the council at the time, he didn't have to come to us and ask us for a dime, because he had.
Right, that's a, that's a big rainy day.
He has two million dollars in Cume Bridge.
Yeah, but it's called a cost to, to fix the road like that? I don't know. How much money it costs for that one around the back river Cutler? Or not Cutler, but, uh, when it was, uh, brick and roof?
Brick and roof?
Yeah.
I, I'm, I don't have that number off top of my head.
If I remember, if I remember, it said on the council, it's like one point two million dollars just to, to fix the banks and get the road rebuilt. Just, it was just a section from here to the end of the road, or to the wall here.
Well, when the next flood's going to be yours.
But you, you want to be cop with your, excuse my language, your friends down?
We're not. We have a very large.
Six million dollars.
I, I don't want to go backwards on our road, that's my.
Yeah, when you, when you're looking at the six million dollars, you can't say, well, this is just, we got six million extra. I mean, we all know that we don't have six million extra. We have six million dollars, and it's, we've eaten a lot of this across, right?
Well, I, I, I guess I don't think.
Are you, are you saying that we have six million dollars that there's absolutely no use for, just sitting there?
We have six million dollars in cash reserves.
Cash reserves beyond this?
Beyond that.
Yeah, okay. What would it cost us to go and replace that bridge?
Yeah, that's the other thing I was going to bring up too. Cume Bridge is restricted in terms of what you can do. Basically, it's got to be a bridge, bridge and culvert. And bill's very, I worry about that, I mean, it sounds like a lot of money sitting in there. But in terms of if we have to build a new bridge or something, you're talking about lots of money bridges anymore, right? It's just, they're shocking in terms of the millions it's all going to cost, if they are. So, Cume Bridge is very restricted in terms of what you can use it for. So, admittedly, I think Cume Bridge in general is kind of off limits, for the most part, in terms of where we're at.
Right, it's for, it has specific uses, but I mean, it's part of.
Six million above what?
We have six million cash operating balance.
Cash operating balance, but that doesn't include, that includes the budget.
That was year end. That was year end cash operating balance. That was, that, that was the year end cash operating balance.
The budgets are coming out of these places.
No, that's, we'll have new revenue that, that comes in there for all that. No, that's a fact, that, I wouldn't really argue.
So are we looking at bridge, I would much rather look at bridges that we know that we can look at right now than to look at the aspect of.
You're talking about.
I can say.
Or said, I don't know about that.
I can, and I said, I don't know about it.
This is a twenty twenty cash operating balance for the.
This bridge is just like a vegan farm. We can see that. We should be looking at those bridges like.
We do, from the viewpoint that, every few years, we have inspections. The one bridge I worry about right now is the bridge down at Fairmont. It, the deck has got some problems there. And the problem to the point that we need to have an easy bridge and a study done on it, find out sure what's going on. And try to do a deck replacement on that. And now, I don't know, seven million dollars, and maybe even more in terms of where we're at. I'm, I'm just not sure in terms of that. Depends upon how much has got to come out, and if there's any structural damage down there underneath on some of the bridges. There's a lot of, you know, it's a big chunk of money. Bridges, I think, a few million, I'm not too concerned about having too much money sitting in terms of where we're at.
Correct.
And I think that in terms of the repairs, we've been doing on the culverts and other bridges, we've been trying to be wise with the money. These little minor projects, trying to spare some money here and there. And there's a lot of culverts right now, but. The Kell Night's pipe, we'll get an old pipe, Kell Night has a supposed fifty year life. Well, in my opinion, there's a lot of pipes that were in fifty years ago, that just now really started to rust out. And so, that's going to continue to be a problem as far as doing that. Last time I saw it, lots of it, I mean, I can't, I can't remember, I think we got three hundred thousand in there, something like that, for that. Cover that. That covers most of our minor road, which is a minor pipe, and you're pretty good with it. Yes, M B H does have right around three million dollar balance in there. But I didn't know that, you know, like it's half that provision or that, you do different things. And I don't mind looking at the council on that.
Right. And, well, I guess my broader point, Paul, is, and this, I don't have the nineteen numbers yet, but this is eighteen, year end eighteen. We brought in three point two, and this was the discussion we were having at budget time. We brought in three point two million dollars of funds, and we spent two point five, five, six million. So there was seven hundred thousand dollars in calendar year twenty eighteen that we went to, uh, the cap op, cash operating balance, so.
Well, next, let me have a real quick one.
Yeah.
Yes, one was saying for the fuel tax did increase, and you know, and all the people saying, no, get this money from the money. All right, I'm sorry, I'm very conservative. When I see the money coming in, you know, and I know it's really there, like you talk about, then I don't mind nothing like budget, and you're going to have to spend on it in terms of where we're at.
Right. So, but, I mean, I, I would say that the, the calendar year nineteen follows along those same lines where we brought in, we spent less more money than we brought in.
Well, does that count on rainy days and stuff where they can't actually go out and do the work?
I don't know what you're saying.
Like if, maybe today's probably out, you probably could do some work, but with it being cold, you can't do much patching because it's not going to stay. During the summer, during rainy days, you know, that's money he's really not spending, he's just working in the shop.
Right, and looking at the whole year.
Right, and there's probably a good month, month and a half of work that probably didn't get done. I mean, he's got.
Well, I think if you could look at just, over the long term data on that, I mean, that's how we came with this.
Because he got up here for, it's twenty thousand dollars a mile to double layer. So if you have ten days or more, that's a lot of money that he did get a chance to use. But we still have it, for when he has a chance to have a good.
Right, I guess.
Because I don't, I don't, what I don't understand is, I don't want my roads to go backwards. Because when I was a kid, I wrote your board.
I just don't understand how you can say the roads can go backwards when we have all the money sitting.
But you're going to spend everything that we already have built up.
No, he didn't spend it all last year, and.
Been spending all the year before that.
This year, he's not going to spend it, I mean, that's what we're trying to tell you, is that he's always had leftover funds.
But, but when you put the time something like your situation here and say, I can't.
Yeah, no, we said, we'll fix that. I mean, to your budget.
So I'd like to ask the question, when do you find out that you get the community crossings grant?
Um, the deadline for application is scheduled to be the sixth. So it'll probably be sometime in the March before we know. I have to tell you this, if we don't get grant this time around, we can refile back in July, or second of the year. I, I don't, I don't know what the money situation is that we end up right now. And that depends on my knowledge, like, yeah, we're, we're sending it sometime in March.
And it's difficult to say, we're going to know, because they tell us when we have to have the application in. They don't tell us when they're going to give us the results. That's just at their whim, so.
Last year, was it last year or the year before, we didn't get longer?
Was it the year before?
And this might be a silly question, but so if, if we budget, I mean, if, if they budgeted or tried to put this not through, what if we don't use this full amount? There's an edit account that's sitting with a lot of money in it already, correct? So if it comes.
So I don't know why, how you guys know that he didn't spend it all. I mean, he said that, but you don't know how much he didn't spend.
Well, I, that's why I asked.
I think I'll probably be looking that up tomorrow.
And that's why I asked that question, is, is the, you know, how much did he have left from that edit funds from last year?
It's usually, it's usually less than twenty thousand or ten thousand.
But if he didn't have that full amount, what Josh is saying is that he's going to pull that from a different area. But he still had that amount left over at the end of nineteen and eighteen. And so, if you run twenty off of nineteen and eighteen, he's still going to have, say, four hundred thousand, just go back.
Okay, but I, I, if I go back in the years, this edit used to go from, it didn't used to go from, if you guys remember that. We had to do that from June to the July first. So he wasn't used to that the first time. So some of the money stayed in there, I mean, because we told him that if he didn't use it by the end of that, that calendar year, or whatever year you want to call it, they couldn't, it had to be rebudgeted. So that started, what, two?
Two or three years ago, I remember.
Three years ago, yes.
So it's not like if we don't budget the whole two hundred and forty thousand, that he's not going to be able to get it down the road. It's still going to be sitting there.
So the bottom line is, what do you want to use that two hundred and forty thousand dollars for?
They have to redo their, their edit plan for them to get them more money. And then we have to prove that.
So the money that's sitting in the edit money, how much is extra in that?
We have just.
I stop back.
Million dollars requests for capital.
Like what you guys did, they took like, they got four hundred and thirteen thousand, and this year is what, four hundred and thirty four thousand, I believe.
All those projects are noteworthy, and are going to help.
And that's what they budget.
Do economic development. They're going to, you know, improve operations.
It rolls over.
So how do you get out, how do you get it out of the roll?
Lot's to be done there.
They budget it.
Is that only at a certain time of the year, or at any time?
You're talking about the general, I mean, the edit cash balance? The cash balance is going to be appropriated whenever.
And that's what I'm saying, it's not like it's not going to.
And so you could, you can make that one.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that they. They still did the same thing that you did, saying that, you know, he can only have.
I don't want to get too close.
What he was going to get in that year, and that's what they did. They took the four hundred and thirty four, knowing there was surplus in the county. But they budgeted that four hundred and thirty four dollars, or four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. So if he doesn't spend his two hundred and forty, yes, it stays in there. But they can do it the next year, but they've been trying to stay within what they bring in too.
Yeah, we have the, basically the same policy, that we take, figure out every year how much money we have coming in. With the requests, that we divide that up by the, by the requests that we have. We haven't had, uh, anybody come in with an economic development project that needed support of two, two hundred thousand dollars. Nobody's put that up to us.
But if it came, and you needed it, it's gone.
Yeah, or surplus.
Until next year.
Right, that's what the surplus is.
I mean, I guess what, I guess what I think, to make it simple, is if he was in dire need of it, and needed it, and was really close at the end of the last three years, then I could see it. But with him being so much over. I mean, I guess what, I guess what I think, to make it simple, is if he was in dire need of it and needed it and was really close at the end of the last three years, then I could see it, but with him being so much over.
The bottom line is, if he's getting a million more dollars than he did two years ago, a year, and we're still supplementing this sooner fifty and, and using the excuse that the sky's falling, I don't want our roads to go backwards, we'll put another million dollars a year into the roads.
Without this.
Without that.
Right.
With the anticipation that if the money.
Well, I look at, we could get more roads done there too, I mean, Carroll County was one of the worst ones there was forever.
Right, man, he's doing a great job.
Our roads are awesome. I mean, it wouldn't matter if Hamilton County. I mean, I think. I think if we start building a budget and we making.
I think. Whether the road is on the east end or down the, and choose to take the south thing or the neutral care, so, springboard or black tennis.
Okay, I got just one quick thing to throw in, and then something that might tip it longer. The one is, when we look at the, for example, the bridge at Piermont, we're looking at a seventy year old piece of equipment that we have here. I, I did just, did hear a little bit to tell you exactly the year that was built, cause my uncle built it. He was, had his job at the time the old covered bridge fell down down there, and, uh, he built that bridge, and the plans are still in that closet right there for. But, and I remember being a little boy, holding on to my dad's hand and looking down in there as the old bridge followed in and knowing that they were gonna, uh, his brother was gonna build his new bridge. But anyway, it's a seventy year old piece of equipment, that thing's not gonna last that much longer, as much as I love it because of family history, it's gonna come out of there. And when we do, we're looking at three million dollars, four million dollars, cause this, we're not talking about a dinky little culvert here, we're talking about a major bridge. When we started out on that project, our engineers were telling us that six billion was pretty close to what it was gonna cost to do. For a new bridge, today, we're looking at ten, twelve, fourteen million for that bridge right there. Nothing, and we're looking, that's a nineteen twenties bridge, a lot of poor bridges in nineteen twenty-eight or thirty, I forget, it's right, just a little bit newer than this one. We're talking about twelve, fourteen million dollar bridge there too. We, we have a paltry fee amount in the bridge fund, not nearly enough.
Right, so we should be, I agree, and we had this discussion a couple of years ago, and it was on session, and we did the thought, then was it federal funds or grants paid for most of the bridge, for the Carroll Bridge or, you know?
It, it, yeah.
So, if, if, if that's the case, we should be looking at how we can save money, not how we can put more money.
Okay, that's gonna be a segue into the next little thing here. And I said this, you guys are gonna be bored hearing this, but at the commission meetings, when I first became commissioner, it was way over ninety percent of phone calls that I could get virtually every day. Why can't you hoop it up, my road, my road is terrible, it's awful. I would go to eat here in town, and I'd hear everybody laughing about how, by God, you drive out of Carroll County into Tidcanoo County, you can tell right where the line is, cause they got roads and we don't, you know? And why is, why is our road so bad and their road are so good and everything? You know, nobody says that to me anymore. We have, one of the promises that I made was, I'm gonna do everything I can to fix the roads. Now, I'm not Paul, I don't have his mental abilities nor education, I can't go out there and engineer that road. But I can work towards making sure we have the money to fix the road, that's my only part I can add to it. I don't have the health to go out and shovel rocks under the road, so I'm not gonna do that. There is nothing you can touch in Carroll County, budget wise, that you're gonna have the ceiling falling north from the borders if you screw good roads. Now, I'm just being blunt about that, because this is a, my road in front of my house is one of the most important things I know of, if you talk to anybody out here. And they don't care how many good roads there are out here, it's the road in front of my house, my gosh, better be fixed, you know? And we have to do that, we have to, and we still have something to go, we've got some that are not good enough yet. But when Paul first came on board, one of the discussions that we had was, of course, how can we get this better? And I'm telling you, see, I've been here through, what, five people in his position, I think? One of them was an idiot who didn't know what he was doing at all, I remember him standing up here and showing us pictures of, uh, covered bridges and explaining to us how that they worked and what needs to be done to it, and he'd never seen one. I went up to him after, I was like, have you ever visited one of our covered bridges, cause the picture you're showing has nothing to do with our bridges, you know, the, the, uh, uh, arch system and everything in there. He just picked a picture out of a magazine and held it up. But anyway, uh, the next guy we couldn't find for very long, because he was always at the Rossville Golf Course with club, and every day the golf clubs were in the back of this pickup truck, and that's where he always was. We had to find replacement for him in a hurry, and the one after him was his assistant, who we replaced pretty quick. And then we went through Ramsey, who was a tremendous guy, incredibly intelligent, he's now head engineer for Alexandria in Virginia, and has seventy professional people on his staff. He was really something, but he was a green kid right out of Purdue when he came here, and a lot of people came in and said, you know, he doesn't know enough about engineering to pour sand out of a boot with the directions on, written on the bottom of the boot, you know? Cause he had no experience. I was helping him paint the Adams Mill Bridge one down there one, one time, and he said, what do you think, Joe, how's my painting looking? I said, well, it's fine, why haven't you painted very much? I never held a paintbrush before, never painted anything before. But he was a tremendous guy, and he really did, he helped, he organized what was a total disaster of, he was an organizer, you know? The next guy was not an engineer, but he really was part, and he was a good guy, great, and then we were fortunate enough to get Paul. And when we held those open discussions with Paul, and we decided he was the one we wanted, okay, how are we gonna fix this? Well, how are we gonna get beyond this? And also I talked with, we, what it just sounds like, we're looking like, we can resurface every hard surface road in Carroll County every eight years. And I, the stink era, I'm sitting right there and saying, no, you can't, there's no way you can get these roads resurfaced every eight years, it's just too, I think we can. He did, we are on, on that schedule of redoing these roads every eight years, and there is nothing that I think we as a group can do that is more important to the people out here in Carroll County than roads. Nothing, and when, when we first started to touch economic development, I would have been economic development director for the county for eleven years. And I said, I don't know about this, I don't like this idea of taking, I knew that other counties around were taking money out of economic development to spend for all sorts of things. Tidcanoo County built an AIDS project of economic development, others were, were using the money. We had always been very, very cautious about everything we did from that edit budget went to edit projects. That was, I, I and my fellow commissioners thought that was oxed, if we're gonna tax you for economic development, you better darn well use it for economic development. But what our roads, when we came up with the idea of every eight years, we decided that isn't that economic development too, having a decent road to drive down? I mean, if we're trying to get people to build decent homes in our county out here, if we're trying to attract people in, if we're trying to attract industry in, to have people who are accustomed to nicer things, they're not gonna come here, but look at Indiana Packers right now, I, I don't know, man, some of the people out there right now. If you went back three or four years ago, there wasn't a darn one of those people at the top that lived in Carroll County. Most of them, Ed Nelson, all those, they lived in West Lafayette, because it had the amenities they wanted, it had the developments where their type of home that they wanted would fit into. We didn't offer what they wanted, well, certainly if we didn't offer a road that you could, didn't have to drive through the ditch to get around the chuckle in there, which is our situation, the roads we're in, we're not gonna attract those people, you know? When I was taking people around, looking around out here, and I took gobs of different industries around looking at, looking at sites. We weren't at that time in a situation of being able to benefit from the tip district now where we have site ready spot. I had to keep a list of farmers who buy and sell you some land, and we'd go around and look at those, which is a darn poor way to try to sell something. Anyway, most of the roads we had to go up and down, we looked, they were terrible, and that was, that was something that they just checked off right away, why would I wanna come here? I can't get a semi down, I can't build in this area here, you know, this is inaccessible. They know to, to, and the major industry knows to limit how long it takes to, to get their plant, four lane highway to a major spot. That's critical to it, they know exactly how much fuel they have consumed to reach their market, and if we didn't provide what they needed, they wouldn't come. So, from that standpoint, we decided, roads are edited, roads are important to our economic development, not only from industrial, but from also from residential building, from attractive homeowners. And from that time on, we, we've used it. Now, if somebody came to us, when we were going through our edit process and edit process, and we well publicize it, government does a great job for us to say, you know, we're already discussing the edit budget now. If you have an edit project that you want, that your community needs, if you have something, come to us, we're looking at the budget now. None of us would say, well, by gosh, we, we're not gonna spend anything on that, but the fact is, for the last several years, nobody's come to us with any piece of project. We haven't had anything to, you know? True, we're gonna put money into, into a, a development. Through the years, we've used edit funds, there was a big old warehouse in South Ken Anderson's at the highway, we know the top of it, but we put quite a few thousand dollars in that, and it was computerized, how moving business went in there. Day to the hour, but we didn't make it, but our county helped support them, bringing them in, we modeled them, we helped build it up. Some of the people, I, I don't, I don't know if I should even say, who all we have, Carroll County Economic Development just edit funds to attract and to help support their project, to give them that extra they need to get in. I, she hasn't ever come over to us and said, hey, we got this big project, and we need to kick in the rail corridor over here, you know, for that big Jeep project. They've never come to us and said, hey, would you kick in an extra four hundred thousand dollars on this thing for edit money to, if we had that, we could land this thing. Never, never had it. So, I, I guess I can't understand, I can say, if you wanted to say, okay, from now on, let's look at where we should put this edit money. Maybe, maybe we should start scaling back up with the highway fund. But I don't wanna trim any, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go out to one single person in Carroll County and say, well, we're not doing your model over this year, cause we wanted to put that money into something else.
That seems like a little hyperbole, now, now it's.
All right, hit me with my hyperbole there, that's a bigger one.
Because we, we've already said that the, the money in highway is not getting used. They're bringing in a million dollars more than they did before, so.
Did you look at this? We're way short this year.
No, that's not, that's not accurate though.
No, it is, this, look, we had to cut from a double chip and seal to a single chip and seal, we don't have two hundred, we had two forty. The numbers don't work this year, go ahead.
That's not what he said, he said, correct me if I'm wrong, you were, you, you chose to do a single layer because it was appropriate for that surface, is that correct?
Well, I chose it because I think we have some roads that we could do that on, and it helps build into the cost overall that we have, as far as money available.
Right.
See, that's not what I heard, I didn't hear what you heard, I heard you say.
You're hearing the same thing now?
No.
Or not, okay.
Not if you're still staying in the same position, because that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing, we'd be better off to do a double chip and seal on this road, but because we have to stay within this one three, which we don't have one three, we're gonna have to go this one with a single layer.
That's, that's the option that was chosen to make the budget, and I think we can find some roads that do that, but two, two layers is much better than one layer.
They're not the same, the two layers aren't the same.
I guess what I don't understand then is why we gave so much money over for last year and the year before.